Good morning. Welcome to the May 1st meeting, or March 1st meeting of the Oklahoma City Council. We have Pastor Jeffrey Goldsmith here from Emmanuel Tabernacle to give us the invocation, and Councilman McAteer would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, everyone, and in the absence of Mayor Nick Cornet and Vice Mayor White, and all the councilmen and women in all that make up this body, as well as the concerned citizens that are gathered here for this meeting. At this time, let us bow our heads as we go before God and ask His blessings upon this meeting. Let's bow our heads at this time. First and foremost, we thank God for this country we live in, and the freedoms and the privileges that we enjoy. We pray that God bless us with continuous peace, security, and prosperity. Lord, we ask for the wisdom and the strength to confront and resolve problems. Give us understanding and tolerance to work with each other for the greater good of the city and those we serve. Lord, we ask that you rebuke any bias, special interests, or prejudice of any kind, and help us to conduct business in a moral, ethical, and kind-spirited way while achieving our goals. Lord, help us always to remember our responsibilities to the thousands of citizens whose will, who have placed their well-being in our hands. Grant our leaders with the patience and vigilance their positions demand, and guide our steps and decisions that we must make. Allow common sense and good order to be the heart of the day, that at the end of the day, you can say, "Well done, good and faithful servant." This is our prayer, and God we trust. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the meeting to order. The brief, just a comment from the office, the first item is from the office of the mayor, just a comment. Today, Mayor Cornet is not here, but today, in terms of tenure, Mayor Cornet ties for the most, the longest service as a mayor in the history of the city. Tomorrow, he will be the longest-serving mayor in the city of Oklahoma City. I think it's kind of appropriate that we call attention to that. He's done a wonderful job as mayor, and I'm sure all of us look forward to a lot more years of service on his behalf. But just personally, and I think on behalf of all of us, we congratulate him for all he's done over the last several years. He will be the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city tomorrow. Anyway, the first item is the appointment, a series of appointments. Do we have a motion?
No.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appointments for him, please. Appointments are approved. Next item, receive the Journal of Council Proceedings. Have a motion and a second to pursue the item. Voting, please. Journal of Council Proceedings approved. Next item is a request for uncontinuances. There's one listed to be stricken, item 9A2.
That's the only one, that's the only one this morning, sir.
Only one this morning. There are no revocates permits. We recessed the council meeting and convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are several items, or one item, I guess, actually. Two items. Have a motion and a second to approve the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority agenda. Voting, please. It's approved. Next item is the claims and payrolls for the OCFA. Motion and a second to approve the claims and payrolls. They're approved. Next item, we recessed the, we adjourned the OCFA and convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Motion and a second to approve. Voting, please. We adjourned the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority and convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There's one, two items on that also. Have a motion and a second to approve that, those items. They're approved. We adjourned the OCEAT and reconvened the council meeting with the consent docket. Number of items. Do we have items for individual consideration? Okay, please. Any other items for individual consideration?
Pete, if I could mention L, N, and O.
L, M.
L, N, C.
And O. Okay. We have people here to speak on item K that may, that may want to speak on item K. Also, I have a delegation here from the Vietnamese community who have labored long and hard to reach an agreement to a suitable monument commemorating the Vietnam War and the contribution of both the United States and the Vietnamese government to that, and they're here today. But Councilman, did you miss the picture?
Yeah, I mean, this is many years in the making. I mean, like, a decade, almost. And it has involved the neighborhoods, have been public meetings, veterans groups, it's been a real group effort. Robbie Kinsel's worked very hard on it. Do you want to say a word about where we are, or when?
Lady and gentlemen, my name is Vinh Nguyen, Chairman of the Vietnamese Community. It's an honor for me to be here and to say something about the project. That means we're going to build a statue, including one is a Vietnamese soldier, and another one is an American soldier. As you know, during the Vietnam War, millions of Vietnamese have sacrificed their life, including 58,000 American soldiers died for Vietnam, for the freedom of Vietnam. So, to honor those people, we need to do something for the city, for the country. So that's why, you know, we have a project to build a monument, you know, a memorial monument to honor those servicemen and women who died for Vietnam during the war. So, our project is going very well. According to the estimation of the city, we need to have only, you know, $210,000 to build the monument, but we already have $150,000 up today. So we need 60,000 more. We are going to have a big council for raising funds on 7th of May to get, you know, 60,000 more. So by the end of May, we will have all 210,000 to build the monument. So we would like to expedite, you know, the project as soon as possible, because we have enough money to build. So if we delay, so believe me, you know, the cost of material will be rising up, so 210,000 will become more than 210,000. So we would like to ask for your decision to let us, and you and us, to build a monument. After, you know, we build that monument, we will be donated to the city. And we, almost 20,000 Vietnamese people in the city, we are proud of this one. So let me conclude, you know. Our dream come true. So without your help, we cannot do anything. So please help to build this project as soon as possible. So this one is the face of the Vietnamese people in the city and in the state of Oklahoma. Thank you very much. Thank you.
If a person wanted to contribute to the monument, do you have an address or email, something that we could use? You have a chance here to talk to a lot of people that might be willing to give, so if you have an address, we'd...
You mean address?
An address for someone might send a contribution if they were so inclined.
Oh, yes. We do have addresses, you know. So our address is Bio, Vietnamese Community of Oklahoma City and Metropolitan, Bio Box Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73146.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate the contribution you've made to the city, and also, having been involved earlier within, in the negotiations with regard to the monument and so forth, I appreciate the hard work it took to come to an agreement with the city to do this.
Thank you, sir.
It's a good example of citizen involvement in some, not only the contribution of the money to build it, but the cooperation that was shown in trying to find something that was everybody could agree on. I appreciate it personally.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, y'all.
Robbie, do you want to summarize where we are at this?
Yeah, so where we are today, if, when council considers this, if you approve it, the Vietnamese-American community will donate the first $50,000 to begin the competition process. We will bring back a call to artists, to council, and we will only be encumbering those funds that we've received through the process, and we hope to have the project completed by next year. But we will do a site-specific competition process with an artist, and it'll have a broad representation on the stakeholder committee.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, lady and gentleman. Thank you.
May I like to acknowledge, Quan Tran is here this morning, and he was a longtime engineer with, originally the Health Department, later with ODEQ, and helped the city on a number of water and wastewater issues over the year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, Meg, you had three items, item L.
I did, Councilman, I'll be, Mayor, I'll be very quick. Item L, I just wanted to recognize positively, Paseo, this is a great opportunity to receive a quick claim deed from the county for unpaid taxes on a lot in the Classen Ten Pen neighborhood, and have new construction constructed for low-income individuals. So it's a great project, and they've done lots of infill, and it's a very creative way to use those pieces of property. Item 7N is a, it's the Early Wine Aquatic Center, and I was just curious, Jim, how we missed that bid so much.
I'm not sure if I can answer all of that. Paul, can you, or Doug, talk about the, the project for Early Wine came in over budget?
Yeah, I don't usually pay that much attention, but this one was 100% over our estimate.
You're correct.
It was a big number.
Nobody was as surprised as I am, Madam Councilwoman. Working with the consultants, we set the bar a little high from a criterion for expert installers of a deep well at Early Wine. We wanted to create a new element for more of the teenage crowd that we would like to attract to Early Wine. And because of the criterion that the consultants had us set into the bid documents, there was only a few firms within the United States that could meet those criteriums, and the price for them to activate, to come from the Houston area or places further than that is what drove, in our estimations, drove the cost up to almost twice of what we had in the budget to do the project. So, so we're going to step back and reevaluate our needs and work with our consultants, get a bid package back out that we feel that we can bring back before you all an award. But again, it was a specialized situation. The criterion was set too high. We think we have some local folks that could accommodate our needs.
And item 7O is just an award to Atlas Paving Company to resurface 23 locations in southwest Oklahoma City in Ward 6. I just wanted to mention that. Total dollar amount being awarded is just about, just shy of $1,800,000.
We have someone signed up, a citizen signed up to speak on item AG. Sarge.
Joe Sarge Nelson, excuse my voice. I don't know if y'all listen to the news much. I do, and I pay attention to the articles that the Gazette put out, Daily Oklahoma. Sunday, I was listening to KTOK, and I was very interested in what Mike Carey, the state tourist and convention man, had to say. The overall picture of the convention center, he didn't make mention of it, but when you get done with his conversation, my uptake on it was, it ain't needed. In the downtown area, we have 16,000 rooms. In the metropolitan, we have 25,000. Combined, we have 41,000. If only one person went in any of those rooms, that's 41,000 people, on any event we got. And our hotels right now are never at more than 25%, never, hardly ever. And we're going to put another one down here, a waste of money? And I was interested in what he got to say, because he says, right now, the projects they've got, the boating, things of this nature, they'll come to river, things of that nature, sports, whatever, they are doing good things for the city, but they're not filling up our hotels, and this is about all we're going to get for quite a while. And then the second thing is, I'm going to ask my councilman to ask, if anything pertaining to the whales or the streetcar presently, and the convention center, that you temporarily put it on hold. Based upon his remarks, and I suggest that you all pull up the tape on that meeting with Quinn Faulkner, you'll find some very enlightening and informative information from the waterworks all the way through. And I do hope that you all recommend this, because right now, our streetcar's in trouble. We have to go back to the trolleys, take the money, put it in there, we do better. But the convention center, mainly, it is not needed according to our state, and this is what this guy does every day for a living, a living. We don't. And going in competition with hotels, it shouldn't even be, we shouldn't even be in that equation at all. So I highly recommend somebody make a motion, we temporarily table the convention center until some other matters are looked into. Thank you.
Mayor, item AG is a contract amendment with populace, so we can determine what's the best heating and cooling system for the convention center, whether we have a central plant, standalone central plant, or whether we tie into tri- Veolia or a central city distribution system for heating and cooling, and this would be an engineering analysis to determine which is the best long-term solution for us.
Thank you. Any other comments on the...
And that's 160,000?
Any other comments on the consent docket? Hearing none, voting please. Consent docket's approved. Next item is a concurrence docket. Have a motion and a second to approve the concurrence docket 7, if it deserves consideration. Are there matters to be considered separately? Hearing none, voting please. Condensed concurrence docket is approved. Next item is item 9, items requiring separate votes. The first item is 9A1, it's a zoning case in Ward 8.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It's 19301 North May Avenue, which is currently R1ZL, to be amended to PUD 1604. It was approved by the Planning Commission, I might note. I think it's one of the first acts of Commissioner Pat Ryan. It was unanimously approved. There was no opposition, and we did receive one letter of protest, but I attempted to call the person to discuss the matter with him. I have not heard from them. Is anybody here today in opposition to this matter? I'd move for its approval.
Motion and a second to approve, comments? Voting, please. Item A1's approved. Item A2 has been deferred. Item 8, stricken, excuse me. Do we need to vote on that? Item A3 is a zoning case in Ward 7.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have here is to create a commercial development. The Planning Commission approved this item back in, on January 14th, 2016. I see that the applicant is present. I move for approval.
Have a motion and a second to approve, comments, questions? Voting, please. It's approved. Next is item A4. It's a zoning case in Ward 2. Speak on this, Pete.
So this class of planning commission unanimously, no protesters, nobody signed up to speak. I'll move for approval.
Yep, there was a second, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve at the comments. Voting, please. Items approved. Item A5, zoning case in Ward 6.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a project to allow for the placement of two food trucks on 10th Street, the northwest corner of 10th and May, right across from the fairgrounds and the new AQHA headquarters. I would move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve item 9A5. Voting, please. It's approved. Next item, 9A6, is a zoning case in Ward 3. Thank you, Your Honor. If you would, brief the council on what you're intending to do and make some comments on how this fits in with the streetscape project along Northwest 23rd that is winding down in that particular area.
Good morning. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and real quickly, what we have is an application for rezoning. It's generally a one-acre site that lies about 1,200 feet to the west of MacArthur, obviously on north side of 23rd Street. The existing site currently is Zone C1, and there is a, an existing office building that is vacant, vacant right now. It's in pretty poor condition. So my client has purchased the property with the intent of remodeling the existing office building so that he can use it and move his personal business there. But in doing so, what he would also like to do is to extend the building further to the north and to provide an opportunity for some facilities that would have office space on the east side, but a little bit of indoor storage and warehouse space on the west side. We have, obviously, we've included it in the spud, so we've got the architectural standard of 60% brick rock, stone masonry, so we've got a good architectural standard. We've limited the height to one story. We have, in regards to some of your concerns about 23rd Street, we have provided for a landscape buffer, as well as additional setbacks around the three sides, as well as landscaping along 23rd. And then we've limited our signs to eight-foot monument signs with the landscaping base 100 square feet. And then we've also, in the spud, limited the amount of warehouse space that we can have to 75%. So some of those are the things that we've included in the spud. If you look at what's around it, obviously, I think we feel like that what we have will be an enhancement to an area. It, in essence, is a redevelopment and revitalization of an infill parcel since it's a vacant, abandoned building. The building immediately to the east is also vacant, abandoned. So I think if you look at the area, what we're doing, it will bring a little bit of revitalization, it'll use an infill parcel, and it's a good application for this site. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kendall. Unless the council has any questions, anybody signed up?
No.
Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval. Have a motion and a second to approve. Voting, please. Thank you. It's approved. Thank you. Item 7, zoning case in Ward 5.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a application for a small retail center along Southwestern Avenue. Representatives for the applicant are here. Francis, anybody signed up?
There are no protests at the planning commission, and it was approved unanimously. I would recommend approval.
Have a motion and a second to approve the item. Comments, questions? Voting, please. It's approved.
Thank you.
Next item, item 9A8, is a zoning case in Ward 3. Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? Don't see anyone. I'm not seeing the applicant here, unless, I'll say it again, is the applicant present? I'd like to move for a deferral to the next council meeting, please. Have a motion and a second to defer to the next meeting, which is?
March 8.
March 8. Next item, item 9B. It's a special permit in Ward 8.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It's, as you said, a special permit dealing with automobile sales lot and expansion of it. It went before the planning commission. There were no protests, there are no protests here today, so I'd move for its approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve item 9B. Voting, please. 9B's approved. 9C. Mayor, 9C is a budget amendment, and there was a presentation last week by the Budget Office regarding the specifics of the budget amendment. Would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Motion and a second to approve, to approve item 9C. Any other, any comments, questions? Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none, public hearing be closed. Voting on the, we have a motion and a second on the resolution, voting, please. Approved. Item 9D, claims recommended for approval. Denial. Yeah, excuse me. Denial. Motion and a second. Claims are denied. 9A, claims for approval. Motion and a second to approve A. Anybody here to speak on these? Hearing none, voting, please. Next is a presentation on, oh, excuse me, lost my head there for a minute. I'm in such a rush to set the record for getting out of here. The, either from the council, we'll start with James.
I have two things. One, I would encourage everyone to vote, obviously, but especially registered independents. Today's kind of a historic day for Oklahoma. Registered independents get to participate in the Democratic primary, not the Republican, but you can vote in the Democratic primary today, and that's a first. The second thing is, I would just, we talked a lot about TIFs last week. I would encourage everyone, if you can, to go buy the Uptown Grocery, the new Uptown Grocery, built by those that build the Buy for Lesses. I call this Buy for More, but it's, it's a huge, it's an enormous establishment that is, I think, going to be wildly successful. The problem is, it's in the Village, and it was built with TIF funds that the Village created on May and Britton. And incredibly, we're able to get that area designated as our urban renewal zone. And so, as I'm in there, I'm getting somewhat nauseous.
You were in there?
I was in there. Didn't buy, didn't...
Are you unclear that I was in the Village?
I was. I wanted to see, and I wanted to see... And I was overcome with nausea as I was walking through it. Because my father, my father, my parents invited me, and my father told me that it was done with TIF funds. I didn't know that. And then I was just overcome with sadness, really, because that is not... I mean, that is such a perversion of the idea of what an enterprise zone or an urban renewal zone should be, a blighted area. And so my concern, as I was just walking through there and realizing that this is like a million dollars of sales tax a year, for a year after year after year, right across the street is Homeland, which is in Oklahoma City, which will now, that will be diverted from. 25% of the sales tax will be given to the Binkowskis that are building this. And which, John, I guess, you know, you're working in Ward 7, which is great because you've got food desert. But while we talk about the benefits of TIF, my concern is that we're not the only ones that are going to engage in this kind of corporate socialism, this kind of transfer of capital to private corporations and developers. The Village has figured it out, and unlike building residential, they're using it for retail, which is going to divert sales tax away from Oklahoma City to the Village. Yukon has figured it out, and they've started their TIF program. And my concern is, what would stop Mustang and Midwest City, Nichols Hills even? I mean, now we get into a TIF arms race. That Uptown Grocery on May and Britton, which is not what TIF was created for, is going to hurt Oklahoma City in terms of sales tax collection. It's going to hurt us bad. It's going to hurt the Homeland right across the street bad. And what we're doing is, we're unleashing things that the market... There is no free market, but this, the myth of a free market rejects. The free market on its own wouldn't build that kind of monstrosity. But this TIF is creating it, and it's unleashing it in the market, and Oklahoma City will be the loser. So as we, as we hear about the benefits of this corporate socialist agenda with our TIFs and how much it's going to help Oklahoma City, I hope that on the ledger, we subtract the millions of dollars that the Village will now have diverted away from Oklahoma City by unleashing this artificial entity into the market. It is, it's truly nauseating. It's a true perversion of every single... The purpose of tax increment financing, to declare May and Britton, please go by there, look at it, and is this a blighted area? Is this what enterprise zones and urban renewal zones were created by the legislature? I frankly hope the legislature starts to take a look at what this whole program, because it's not going to be... Oklahoma City's not going to get to do this in a vacuum. This kind of corporate socialist agenda is going to permeate through all the municipalities, and it's going to turn into an arms race, and we'll, we'll be the loser. We all, well, the kids certainly will. Education will. Thanks.
Just thank you. Just like to take a brief moment to brief you all on a meeting that was held last Tuesday evening at the Mustang Community Center by the Turnpike Authority and the Secretary of Transportation, Gary Woodley, was the chief presenter. Gary did an excellent job of giving about 100, 150 attendees, giving us an appreciation for why the Turnpike Authority has come up with the conclusion that it's necessary for some extension of the turnpike, the Kilpatrick, to be extended from its current terminus at I-40 and about Southwest 15th in that area. The plan is to extend it about seven miles to now terminate into 152 at South Council. And it was a very informative meeting. Then they broke up into individual sessions where the neighbors had an opportunity to visit with engineers about how this particular recommendation would impact their property coming down. There was no exact route given. This was a fact-finding mission, and the staff from the Turnpike Authority is to take the information gained last Tuesday night, bring it back to their work, and come up with a proposed route or a tentative route, and then present that at a public meeting sometime in late March or in April. So it was a very good meeting. The citizens asked some very good questions. There were some valid concerns, of course. Will this impact my property? What will it do to my quality of life? And so I'd encourage the neighbors out there to stay tuned and to attend the next meeting, where they'll be getting into more specifics. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. David?
I would just share Councilman Shadid's suggestion that everybody exercise their right to vote today. And I challenge those that say, you know, "I'm not happy with any of the candidates being proposed," and to choose not to vote just because you're not happy with the slate of candidates, I think actually hurts more than it helps. I think each candidate has some issues that we could all say we would prefer they didn't have, but really, I think you... I'm just encouraging people to put those aside and select the best candidate that they think they have an opportunity to choose from. Thank you.
I just, very briefly, we've got a couple of great events coming up that I want to make sure people get. April 3rd on their calendar, Open Streets is coming back to Northwest 23rd Street. It's just a wonderful opportunity for families and young folks to get out and learn about healthy lifestyles in our community. And so April 3rd on everybody's calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, last Thursday at 2:00, we had the great opportunity to hold our first groundbreaking service for the first Northeast Renovation TIF District, the redevelopment of the Northeast Shopping Center. So again, I want to thank staff and the Alliance for a job well done in trying to get that project to the point where we did break ground on last week. And also thank, I would like to thank Mr. Rick Brown and also the Chaddick family. And Councilman Shadid, I had the opportunity to see your daddy there, so it was a great, it was a great event. So again, thank you, thank everyone who was involved in the groundbreaking for the Northeast Shopping Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to briefly echo your comments and congratulate our mayor on 12 years of great service. He's done an outstanding job, and I hope when others see him, they will also recognize and congratulate him on this milestone.
Thank you. The next item, city manager reports and the first time, Mr. Presentation of Downtown Oklahoma City Year in Review.
And Jane Jenkins is here.
Who is, what is that? That's a new one right there.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the city council. Despite everything going on in Oklahoma City, and we really have to keep our chin up these days, DOKC had a really good year last year. And so we're here to tell you a little bit about that, and I'm here to kind of make an announcement. We've had some recent staff changes. Two of my senior staff members have gone to the private sector, which, you know, trained them well, and others will steal them. So I'm happy to say that for Jill DeLozier, this resulted in a promotion, and she's now the Vice President of Downtown OKC. She's going to be making the presentation this morning, and so I'll turn it over to
Thank you all very much. This is our year-end presentation, and we've given it to the Bid Board of Directors and the DOKC Board of Directors, so a couple of you may have already seen it. But it's just highlighting what our team was able to accomplish in the past year with the help of all of you and the support of city staff. And just in downtown in general, development that happened, these are conservative numbers. I know they're currently growing as well. We added 318 hotel rooms, 417 residential units, and added or redeveloped 358,000 square feet, and 12 new restaurants and bars, and eight new retailers and services came to downtown this past year. In the news, of course, downtown OKC and all the development that's happening here is in the news every day, but for our organization in particular, we were mentioned in Southern Living Magazine, Southwest Airlines Magazine. ESPN asked us to provide some photos of downtown for the Christmas Day Thunder Game. Steve Lackmeyer wrote a great article about Bricktown revitalizing and the cultivation mural that we helped fund under the, underpass between the Central Business District and Bricktown was on the cover of Oklahoma Gazette. This is a quick overview of the social media accounts that we manage for all the different downtown districts, and we saw some incredible growth this year. And quickly, I wanted to point out, our Twitter followers grew 44% in one year, and we're really proud of our communications outreach and talking about issues that impact downtown and helping to promote the businesses that are here and helping them continue to be successful.
I'm amazed at how fast you guys are. You are on 24/7. It doesn't matter what.
It's a team effort, for sure. Everywhere, it looks like we're seven places at one, but it's all of our staff kind of helping out with that.
It's incredible.
We also produced 41 events last year, just our team, and that includes a bunch of monthly events like Shop Hop and Auto Alley. And one particular event that I wanted to call out was Brick or Treat, which is a family event in Bricktown that happens the Tuesday before Halloween, and it's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And this is just the second year that it happened, and we had over 10,000 people come out and just little kids running around to the different businesses to collect candy, and it was a really fun event. That's also provided free to the public and as part of bid funds. And Bricktown got a new logo, and it's been about a year and a half now since we launched that, and we put new district ID markers all over Bricktown. And this past year, we also did a resident survey, people who live downtown and what they'd like to see the priorities of DOKC be, and, you know, what areas they'd like to see downtown grow. And we did a survey of our Board of Directors for the same purposes, to find out what our goals should be going forward, and we're going to have a staff retreat next week to kind of talk about that and go forward with our efforts. On the operations side, Meg is actually in that photo. We installed four new trees on the Bricktown Canal and five new Big Belly recycling bins. And we continue to work on the underground, and it has some leak issues whenever the weather gets bad, but we're staying on top of that. And we transferred all of the completed Project 180 packages over to downtown OKC, so we are continuing to work on landscaping, irrigation, and other beautification projects.
Jill, how is the recycling going?
It's going really well. So the Big Belly recycling bins are smart trash cans, and so they tell us, they can send us a text message or an email when they start to get full, so we know when to empty them. And it tells us the percentage of recyclable material that comes out of those, and it's incredibly high. I think it's somewhere around 80% recyclable material.
And how many do we have now? We've got one by the library, we've got this one by DEQ.
There are eight.
Eight?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you.
And in the building capacity realm of what we do, that's to help districts kind of start up and assist their Boards of Directors in becoming organized and getting the retailers' groups to meet together and communicate. So as you know, we successfully renewed the bid this year, and we added Midtown to the bid, and we helped them start a Midtown Merchants Group. So all of the people that have restaurants and retail services meet every other month, and they're already planning their first event, and it's really neat to see them communicate with each other. And Deep Deuce is also doing the same thing. They don't have a formal Board of Directors right now, but they do have a steering committee made up of people that own property or manage businesses in the area, and that they're very excited about getting a new sign over the overpass, going into Deep Deuce, and working on some other fundraising projects.
And you're doing that sign through a crowdfunding platform? Is that going okay?
Yeah, GoFundMe. We set up a website so people from the community can donate to the Deep Deuce sign, and then we are actually going to put in some money from DOKC as well to make that a reality. On the advocacy side, of course, we continue to promote the Quiet Zone. We get lots of tweets and comments about when that is happening, so we continue to talk to the community about the positive changes that are happening there. And we have hosted lots of tours of downtown. In particular, when Jacksonville, Florida brought a group here, we gave them walking tours of all of our downtown districts. And we're still working on some issues in Bricktown, but we hired IQC to do an accessibility study on the Bricktown Canal, and we've worked with Councilman Pettis on that. And so we're right now kind of pricing out what it would cost to add things like elevators and more ramps and make it easier for people to get around there. In community relations, I'm sure you guys have seen the new downtown guides out and about. They wear yellow uniforms, and they are to supplement the police ambassador program that are all over downtown. These guides are a little bit further reaching, so they go up into Midtown as well, and they are helping people find directions, give restaurant recommendations, direct them towards shopping, and basically just a helpful, friendly face on the street, and that's been going really well. We also sponsor more than 30 downtown events as part of the bid. So in addition to the events that we actually produce ourselves, we're supporting other things and making sure that they come downtown and want to stay downtown and add to the Public art is something that the DOKC initiatives, which is a separate 501(c)(3), has made a priority. And this past year, we launched the Second Annual Artist Invitational, which is a program where we invite 20 local artists from the central Oklahoma to give us their ideas, what they'd like to see activated in downtown, and how they could make things more beautiful. And they've come up with some really creative ideas. Last year, we did a few murals, but this year, all three of the winning projects are non-murals, so we'll see some different ideas come. And one of them is in Bricktown, one is at OCU Law, and one is at the Downtown Community Basketball Court. Another effort that we are going to focus on this year is placemaking, which is taking a small amount of money and making a big impact that people will notice if they're a resident or if they work downtown or if they're just visiting. And so we set up parklets, we installed lights over the Bricktown Canal, and again, that's in conjunction with the public art, so people are feeling like it's more of a destination, and they're encouraged to go and explore the area. And we really feel like downtown is the gateway to other districts around Oklahoma City as well. So if they, if people are visiting here and they know to go to Bricktown first, then we've started talking to all of our Bricktown merchants about encouraging people to go to Auto Alley and Plaza District and Western Avenue. So we're really kind of making sure that the entire city benefits from some of these And that's the end of the presentation, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to take those as well.
Any questions?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jill. And Debbie Miller is here this morning, and Eric Wingerstedt, Eric's off working on some projects outside the office, and she's going to give us an update on a various number of ODOT projects around the city.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I'm here to provide a status update of the projects going on with the Department of Transportation within the city limits. As you know, we work closely with ODOT to make sure that the projects are seamlessly in the city network. The major projects that are multi-phased that we're going to talk about today are I-235 and the I-44 interchange, the I-35-I-240 interchange, State Highway 74, and the Oklahoma City Boulevard. And the I-235 and I-44 interchange is divided into seven phases. The first phase began in 2011, and the second phase was in 2013. Both of those are complete, and the next phase is scheduled to begin in 2016. Here you can see a map of the interchange that's broken up into the different phases by color. The yellow and the light blue are both complete. The phase that will begin this spring is the royal blue color, and that does include the Northwest 50th Street Bridge and the railroad bridge that spanned the highway. The next project is I-35-I-240 interchange. This interchange has been divided into six different phases. The first phase is to begin this spring, and the second phase will begin next year. The remaining four phases are in design and will begin construction 2019 through 2021. Here's a map. It does show, I guess I should orientate you, the I-35 is from top to bottom, and I-240 is from east to west. The phase that will begin construction is the royal blue over here on the left side, and that's actually from Santa Fe over to Shields. The second phase that will begin next year is the purple phase. The second phase that will begin next year is the purple phase, it's kind of hard to see, and that takes your eastbound I-240 traffic to southbound I-35. The next project is State Highway 74, which is North Portland in Oklahoma City. This project is divided into two phases. It's north of Memorial to 164th Street is Phase 1, and the second phase is 164th up to Coville Road. The first phase is currently under construction, and it's expected to be completed this summer. The final phase will begin early 2018 and be completed in the spring of 2019. Here's a picture that shows Portland or State Highway 74 that's running from the left to the right side, and Northwest 150th, which is top to the bottom. And there you can see the bridge that actually separates the traffic from the highway and Northwest 150th. The next project we're going to talk about is the Oklahoma City Boulevard, and this is divided into five different sections. We have the west section, which is North Penn to Klein Avenue, the railroad bridge, which is the BNSF Bridge, the east section, which is the railroad bridge to I-40, the center section, Walker to Gaylord, and the transition section, which is Klein to Walker. The next slide shows the status of each project. The west section has been completed. The east section is scheduled to be completed in the summer of 2017, and this does include the railroad bridge. The center section is scheduled to bid late this spring or early summer, and the transition section is scheduled to begin late this year into early next year. This is a map showing the I-40 relocation, which the Boulevard has always been a part of, and the Boulevard is shown in the light blue.
Copy that colored map.
There are other numerous projects that ODOT has ongoing within the city. One of those is Choctaw Road interchange at I-40, and it is scheduled in 2018.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. On their eight-year plan, it shows to be completed in 2018, or not completed, started in 2018. So we should be complete with our roadwork before they come in and start the interchange.
Do you know why the coordinate, you know, you mentioned earlier about it being seamless between the city's projects and ODOT projects? How that got so out of culture? I mean, that was in our 2007 bond issue. That's almost 10 years ago. We've now virtually spent the money to build all the approaches. So, I mean, we haven't quite finished because I continue to get complaints about Choctaw Road not being open and being opened and all that. But it was my understanding that we were going to do that all at the same time, or they were going to do their part first to avoid tearing up the extensions that we're putting in.
Right.
How did that get out of whack like it is?
It had to do with ODOT scheduling. They kept having to move it out. It may have been due to some utility relocations, there's some significant ONG relocations out there.
You know, I think sometimes the schedule is more to be sure there's construction going on 24/7 than there is doing it all at the same time. I mean, the Boulevard situation is going to really kick in gear about the time all the projects downtown are completed. You know, it seems like it's a little more coordination would be. And I recognize coordinating with ODOT is not as simple as me just saying, I wish we could do a better job of it. I know it's more difficult than that. They've got budget problems and political problems that we tend not to have.
Right.
But I appreciate the fact that we're going to start on Choctaw. It's just, it's one of the things that, for me, has just been a constant battle over the last four or five years. When we started ours, people were calling me and saying, why isn't the state part of it being started? Because what we're doing is really not going to do much for the safety of that intersection. It's what they're doing is what-
Right.
-we're making a safe intersection.
You're right.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
On behalf of Ward Eight, I'd like to thank you for the work you've done at 150th in Portland. I drove through there this morning, and there are many, many people are excited about that concluding and winding up, and I'm really excited about how that's going to alleviate traffic problems there. Thank you.
And also, I-235 and the I-44 exchange, I'll be happy when that is completed. I know Councilman Shadid will be happy too, because we receive a lot of complaints about that whole operation over there, and sometimes a lack of action and completion and within a certain timeline. So we look forward to that process being completed.
Debbie, do you have any renderings of how the Boulevard, as it connects on the east side going under the railroad tracks, will look? Do we have any?
Are you talking about-
We'll get him some.
Yeah, okay.
We'll get some.
I can handle that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have this morning, sir.
We have the claims and payrolls under our city manager's report. You have a motion on claim and payroll? We don't need to. Citizens to be heard. Sergeant Nelson. While you're coming up, Sergeant, I want to tell you, I appreciate the fact that you held your comments under the earlier time to three minutes, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Anyway, Joe Sores Nelson, something's really bothering me about that screen. I've asked about this once before. I'll ask one more time. That Ferris wheel up there, is that city-owned? Or is it not city-owned?
It is not city-owned.
Okay. Where's my case? Okay, anyway, I hear a lot of people up here, like Ms. Kathy O'Connor, and a few of the others, of all the great work they've done. I do not deny that they don't work hard, do not misunderstand that. I believe they do. I just kind of get my fur rumbled a little bit when people take credit for some of the things they didn't do. Our former mayor, Mr. Humphries, and I'll state that very clearly, y'all wouldn't have one of the projects at all if he'd have got his way. In 2000, eight of these tapes came out. I put up $45,000 to do these tapes, and I stopped the Discoverin' from being tore down. I had some celebrities all the way from Rue McClanahan to Jody Miller to the Governor Keaton and quite a few others that backed me on it. And I came up with the money to save it. The only mistake I made, I didn't have the money to renovate it. So I took the problems to City Hall. Back then, Joe Van Bullard was there, and George Farhan, a few of them later, read over my plan, and they thought that it would make it. So they put Discoverin' Solutions together. Three or four months later, they bought Discoverin' Hotel, and it's what it is today. Now, the renovation part of it, I had nothing to do with, and I'll commend her for that. But other than that, that would have been a parking garage to add to his holdings. He owns half Oklahoma City anyway. He thinks he's got everybody Brian Bullard, but he don't. I've walked horns with the man before, and I'm not trying to start trouble. I know some people up there in the council, and I'll speak it for the first time, so Mr. Jordan will hear me, are making money off these MASH projects. That I know for a fact. Now, two projects we don't even need. The rails should never even come into question. I saw the new Gazette out there where it shows the new park. The parks we need, people go to those things. We don't need those rails, they're killing us. Nobody has even thought about the convention center. Time you pay the $280 million from the original MASH projects, plus all the other incentives, $3 million up here, $15 million, side deals that we're having to do, this additional funds we've got to have, that's just for doing all this stuff. What about the people that's going to have to run it, man it, the food, the sheets, the furniture, all the things that we're not thrilled about? This thing's going to go completely off the map. We've got a budget right now, $1.5 billion. Time you get done, we're going to be bankrupt. Because we got projects, I saw up there on that screen said that $3 billions is what they're going to be having on all these other projects. Where are we getting all this money? If we ain't got it now, we're doggone sure not going to have it then. Thank you, sir. But anyway, I commend you all for having me, and y'all have a nice day.
Thank you. No further items to come for the council? We're adjourned.